All rise. Hear ye, hear ye. Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Kutchoff presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. Good evening, everyone. We are gathered together for our Hammont County Legislative Body Regular Scheduled Meeting this February the 22nd, 2024. And as we begin, I would like to call on Commissioner Hahn if he would lead us in prayer. And, um, yes, would you continue, sir?
Spout. Dear heavenly Father Lord, we give you all thanks and all praise for allowing us to come here tonight as a civil body to discuss civil matters. And we ask God that you allow us to do it in a civil way that is beneficial to all members and all citizens of Hamlin County. We've had a lot of issues come up in the last few days that have weighed heavily on my mind, and I'm sure on others also. So we ask God for discernment and strength of decision-making. And we ask God that everything that we do and everything that we say, all matters that we take under, that we'll do it, God, to please you. We pray, Lord, that your will be done. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Walker, would you lead us, please, in the intention, salute, pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a monitor issue over here before we call the roll. Rodney's. That is better. All right, Madam Clerk, let's call the roll, please.
Sorry. It's psychological, remember.
Fourteen present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Chair, if we will take care of that as it happens then, right? Okay. All right, we'll move. We do have a recognition that we may plug in a little later. If he's currently in a preliminary hearing, if he were to show up, we will take time to honor a soon-to-be-retired Detective Sergeant. We will now move to our public comment session. Mr. Walker? First on our agenda, item two A, public comments regarding general and non-agenda items. We have one person on our list. Lyndon Noe, you're recognized.
Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road. For non-agenda items, I want to talk about rules. I'm going to ask that you have your rules committee meet. And I'm only going to mention two things tonight, although there are more. But I'd like you to consider changing your rule on cameras or cell phones, either one, to allow people in the audience, as long as they don't disrupt, wave it about, make noise with it, or have a light that bothers anybody, as long as they simply sit there like so many people do, and like I'm sure many of you have done at a meeting, or a rally, or a ballgame. You're the only people group in Morris Town in Hamlin County that I know of at this time that restricts the filming of your meetings with a small cellphone or a small handheld camera. And that speaks for the school board, city council, the joint economic board that Mr. Kutchoff is on, planning commissions. You're it. I'd like you to consider, reconsider changing that rule. I'd also like you to consider. I'm not going to go there about the public comments, but it would be nice if you would go back to the way you had it with allowing people, if they wanted to request five minutes. I know it's a lot of your time, but you asked for this job. You gave yourself a raise. Most of you get insurance. Can you just let the people talk as they would like to? But on the rules, the other thing I'd like to ask for is that you allow people to talk about an agenda item right before it comes up, not at this point in time, and then 20 votes later, the item that somebody is talking about comes up. I've mentioned it before. Other places do it, not everybody, but it makes perfect sense. Listen to the people right before you vote, not 30 minutes or 45 minutes before the vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on general non-agenda items? You may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will now move to item two B regarding agenda items. We have one person has signed up. Quinn Holden, you are recognized.
Quinn Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. My, what I want to talk about is seven A on your agenda. I think that you should let campers stay as they are if they're on sewer and water. You've grandfathered in everything else. And let them stay, so why not let campers stay that are abiding by the law? Like with their sewer and their water hooked up. But we've had, uh, pollution issues for years in Hamlin County. I know. I was in a lawsuit with one of them. And it's not just where Mr. Walker lives, or where Mr., or even where you live, or even where any of these county commissioners live. It's out where I live, too. Nothing was never done. Nine years I tried to get that community cleaned up. Nobody cared, still don't care. So I moved. I'd had enough. I know you can't make people clean up, but if you've got laws, you should go by them. You've had the camper law in for over a year. How come it takes so long to get the job done? So I say the ones that are hooked up and are abiding by the law, leave them alone. Get the ones that are not, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission regarding agenda items? You may do so, stating your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Mike John Cox, 3121 Three Springs Road. First, I'd like to piggyback on the RV, and I'd like to ask that you grandfather all that have met certain standards and will meet certain standards under the de facto law. And the reason I ask that is, I owned a business. I had a campground I owned. I had 500-foot of riverfront property. My campsites went right to the water. That was in 1980s I bought it. Mid-'90s, they come up with the Chesapeake Bay Act. I was grandfathered. I was allowed to continue operating the way I had been because there was no violations. Uh, I could not do any, I could just maintain what I had. I could not do any improvements or new sites.
Hold on, just a minute, Mr. John Cox. We're being interrupted from the front row by the small cellphone. You may continue, sir.
Like I say, if they're meeting certain standards, there's other options you could do. You could have them apply for a permit, just keep it there for a year, to be inspected by the Health Department, make sure they're in compliance. And has any of you ever looked into Hawkins County? My son's girlfriend put a fifth wheel on her mother's property. The county gave her a mailing address. They put in a driveway for her. I dug the septic lines tied into her septic tank for her. We dug the water lines, the electric lines. Electrician come in, everything was up to code. There's no problem over there. Basically, too, I live out in the rural. What is acceptable in the rural is not acceptable in suburban Hamlin County, let alone housing development. I understand that. You know, I just, I just think that common sense, compassion towards some of them that have been, and especially if there's been no violations and no complaints, why penalize them? You've, you know, de facto government, I mean, de facto clause is you've allowed it to happen for years, whether right or wrong, it's just has happened. If there's no complaints, let them continue living that way, but stay within certain standards. And I want to appreciate and thank the members here that have texted me, called me, and emailed me back. And, uh, you know, we agree to disagree on a lot of things, but I like to toss out solutions, possible solutions for it all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? You may do so now. Seeing none, we will now move to, um, we do not have nominations or appointments. We'll move to item four, calendar rules committee report from Chairman Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have item four A, which is the consent calendar items. And if you look at your consent calendar, item 12, this is a report only, it's from MATS, the Hamlin County Homeless, 2024 point in time count has been added, and I put that in the form of a motion with.
We have a motion to add item 12 to MATS, Hamlin County Homeless, 2024 point in time count. Do we have a second? We have a second? Okay, just making sure. That's fine. No, you didn't know. So now, let's, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This motion passes.
So now I have the approval of item four A, the consent calendar. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and now we need a second. It's on the board, yes. All right, we have a motion, second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
For item four B, which is approval of the regular calendar items, we have one addition, which is in, uh, segment 13. It's 13C, which will be the surplus of service weapon for retiring Detective Sergeant David Stapleton. And I put that in form of a motion that we approve that addition.
All right, we have a motion to surplus the service weapon of Detective Sergeant David Stapleton to our consent calendar 13, I mean, I'm sorry, to our regular calendar, item 13C. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
What happens when you do that? Where do they go? Both ways?
It goes to the officer that retired.
Oh, he took, he, okay.
Is, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. Oh, I take, my bad, I got ahead of myself. Let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. This motion passes. Yes, sir Thomas.
So now we have item four B, which is the approval of the regular calendar items. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the approval of the regular calendar items? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion passes.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Everyone, we'd like to revert back to order number one for recognition, and we'd like to call Detective Sergeant David Stapleton to the well, please.
At this time, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Detective Sergeant David Stapleton for his retirement tomorrow. Uh, David's been dedicated for over 31 years to the citizens of Hamlin County, and has been a huge asset to the sheriff's office. And I want to thank you all for surplus of this weapon.
Thank you, everyone, for that indulgence. We will now move to, uh, we did not remove anything from item five for the consent calendar removal. We are in item six, the approval of the consent calendar. I need a motion.
Go move.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion passes. And we will now, this Hammont County Commission will recess as our legislative body and open up the public hearing for the resolution 24-02, a resolution to amend Article Five Definition Hamlin County Zoning Regulations to Include Recreational Vehicles. This hearing is open. Anyone that would like to speak? You have three minutes to do so. You may state your name and address.
Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road. I would like to say I support Mr. John Cox and his proposal. At your last committee meetings, there was a lot of heartfelt concern about the homeless and people who, and children who don't have meals, or rely on daily bread, or various food pantries. And that was in connection with the grants for the Avenue and for the Childcare Center. And that I'm glad those are coming through and will help the children, and that the school has a program of its own. But then we come to, what do people who can't afford food or other things do about where they can live? Every one of you is aware of the unbelievable cost of housing. If you could buy something, it's, I'm shocked. And then, if you go to try to rent, it's almost the same as a house payment, but you have to rent because you can't afford the down payment. And so it's a vicious, difficult cycle with inflation, with interest rates. And so as Mr. John Cox said, I have no problem with you defining what an RV is, but it's what you're going to do with that as far as telling people, go find something, because you can't stay in this any longer. And I think if people have a camper or an RV, and it's hooked up to water and electricity, and it has a means of taking care of wastewater, either septic or sewer, or perhaps they're going to take care of the wastewater themselves, removing it as needed. Have, have compassion for these people that are not as fortunate as you, or I, or a lot of people. You've got your homeless, your point in time survey. Look at it. It tells you how many children are homeless, how many people of various age brackets are homeless. And I know you can't vote on it today, but I think you should make a statement for the people who are in these dire situations, and take it back to the planning commission. And as Mr. John Cox said, work out something to help these people as well as the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there someone else that would like to speak in this public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing portion of our legislative body, now reconvene as our Hammont County Legislative Body. We will move to item eight, zoning resolution, uh, our vote for the zoning resolution, Resolution 24-02, a resolution to amend Article Five Definition Hamlin County Zoning Regulations to Include Recreational Vehicles. I need a motion.
I make a motion.
We have a motion?
Before we move forward, could you be a little more in-depth with what we're exactly we're doing here?
Absolutely. I will state what's before us, and Commissioner Long, Chairman of this committee, can also. We have a motion, and we have a second. Okay. Number one, this is for a definition of a recreational vehicle. To be honest, I mean, not honest, that's not a correct term. Our regulations have been in place for some time as far as not allowing someone to live in an RV and a camper. Excuse me, I have, I just heard something I didn't know.
He's trying to.
Okay. So the, this is a definition defining more precise what an RV and a camper is, but the regulations have already been in place. It has to do with zoning. It has to do with 2018 International Building Codes that don't allow, that our county has adopted. Chairman Long?
And I think, uh, some people have misunderstood what this was. This is a definition adding to what was already in place. We're not voting tonight whether to allow them or disallow them.
Right.
This is a definition to clean up, like, for instance, if you take a school bus and turn it into a camper, set it somewhere along the property or something, all this does is clean up the definition of what that is.
That's what I thought. I just want to get that clarification.
Commissioner Neesmead?
Saying that, we've, this is just clearing up the paperwork. This thing has been in effect for several years. You cannot live in a camper. After a few years, we're finally getting the paperwork right on it. We're getting the wording right on it. So Planning Commission has had this rule into effect, and we could have went out to anybody's place that was living in a camper and kicked them out. Could move, if they lived in a mobile, if they lived in a RV, we could have kicked them out. So this, this ain't nothing new. This has already been there. A few years ago, it was, it was voted that you could do it. And then the next meeting, it came back, and it voted you could live in a camper. I don't know if some of you remember or not, I do. But after, after it came back up, because the Planning Commission has got their codes, we don't want to change what Planning Commission does to help out somebody that can't do any better for herself on where they live. That's the whole bottom line is. That's what it is. So what we're doing now is just clarifying what, what the wording is on it. We're still, after this is done, we can still go out and kick those people out of them, out of them campers, out of them RVs. Which we could have been doing for the last seven or eight years, ever since I've been here. So we're finally catching up to what we could have been doing all along. Tell me I'm wrong. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. My heart goes out to these folks, and I agree totally with Mr. John Cox. I don't see why we cannot amend the definition to the point that if they have suitable, correct sewage disposal. Now, some of us was raised without water and electricity, but some of us that are quite a bit old. But it's not something that you necessarily have to have running water. And some of us have still roughed it a few times without electricity. But I don't see why, for the sake of the Hamlin County citizens that cannot do any better, and we're talking all age range, from mine on down to children that are grade school age, and I think Mr. Hahn, I think, touched on that, the need of the food and so forth, because they didn't have things. I don't see why, in the name of God, that we cannot amend it, that if they can meet the standard, and they can be grandfathered in. I am, I for one am fearful that when you do this, you're laying the county open to a class action lawsuit, like happened back in, to about 15 years ago, when Planning Commission voted that you had to have trees to cover cars and stuff in the pasture field. And I was the example on that, and I found out it was illegal after they pushed all the buttons. I worry about us putting Hamlin County citizens to the disgrace of a lawsuit, a $25,000 fee, if we lose that lawsuit. So please consider, at least amend the definition to the point that if they will meet the sewage disposal properly. Now, I understand fully what some of these commissioners have talked about. 15 years ago, my neighbor ran it out on top of the, on top of the ground, and I for one can sit on the back porch and drink a cup of tea. So I understand fully, but I don't see why we can't show some compassion and grandfather some of them in. Now, some of them, to my understanding, are built for occupancy. They are inspected, and that issue was brought up in here. But I for one saw the stickers on some of them, so I didn't know what's in place. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Long, you're recognized.
I just want to clarify what Mr. Neesmead said when he said they cannot live in them. They can live in a camper if they have an active building permit, and they can stay in that camper until their home is built, until they receive occupancy of the house that they're moving into, then it has to be disconnected. I just want to make that point. They can be in a campground or RV park. They are allowed there. So I just wanted to make that clear, because all we're doing tonight is doing the definition. We're not amending whether we can have them or not. That's not what this resolution is.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
I just want to kind of back what Rodney's saying. All we're doing is defining what a camper is. What kind of vehicle falls under the class of a camper? We're not trying to say right now that they can or they can't. What rules we're going to have to say who can and who can't? But as our building code states, and I will agree with Rodney, you know, I've went through this. If it's in a campground... If it's in a campground, that's controlled by the state if it's in a campground. You know, if you're building a house, you can live in it while your house is being built. You know, we do have rules that allow it. But we have to start moving forward. And just like Wayne said, these are things that's been in place that nobody has done anything about. I agree. And that's when it's hard to make a decision as a commissioner, when do we say we're going to enforce the rules that Hamlin County has and enforce it? If we don't, it's going to get worse than what it is right now. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. Make the rules, who can have them, where, what is called. That way, if I say my pickup truck, I'm living in the back of it, it's not a camper, we can define, yes, if you're living in your pickup truck in the back end of it, and you've got a bed in there, and you've made it into a camper, it's considered an RV vehicle. That's all we're trying to decide right now. And that's all we're trying to get past. Thank you.
Mr. Neesmith, you're recognized.
Sir, I could live in my hippie van. I could live in my hippie van. I could pull my hippie van up out of my backyard, and I could live in it. Tell me I'm wrong. I've got a license plate on it. I pay taxes on it. I can live in my hippie van. And I think this is going to come up. We're going to get some more stuff coming up later on, on this camper-type thing. Wait till these tiny homes hit again. That's going to get, that'd be the next thing that hits us. And them taking these containers and building houses out of them, how are we going to clarify that through our Planning Commission? We wasn't there when they were built. That's going to have to all be grandfathered. We've got a lot of issues on this thing. It's going to be coming up. So that's all I've got to say. I realize that this is, all you're finally getting around is to clarify what a RV is. But something is said here about a week or so ago, a couple of them brought up out of it, it's a fire hazard, it's a fire hazard. Well, there's a motor home caught on fire the other day. And there's a guy's barn caught on fire. We're not concerned about that. We're concerned about those campers that people live in. And RVs they live in. That's what we're concerned about. So I rest, I rest my case.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just like, you know, give one little point of clarification. Mr. Neesmith was right. This did come about a year or so ago. But there was not a vote to let people live in them. It was a motion to table it till we could come up with a proposal on what would be correct hookup, because I made that motion myself. And upon looking at it and digging further through it, there was nothing found as far as a legal definition of what would be there for a proper hookup. So about three, four months ago, it was brought up, and it was voted on that we still had that in there. And again, this is just to clarify what a camper is, but that motion got tabled as far as the regular hookup. It was never voted on that people could live in them. Because I said, I'm the one that made that, because I was following it. And I've always been a strong advocate that people should be able to stay in them. But this is not the time to change that. We need to bring up other changes. This is just merely to define what one is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on this item? Item eight, Resolution 24-02, to amend the Article V definition of the Hamlin County zoning regulation to include recreational vehicles. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yens, two days.
This motion passes. We'll now move to item nine, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman. Chairman Horner, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item nine A, Change Order Number 17 for $26,486, and I put that in form of a motion.
Do you have a motion? We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. I'll be voting no on this for the simple fact I feel like that we should meet in an executive session, if no other way, and hear from the attorney that was hired on the contract problems of this. And it's long overdue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yens, one day.
And this motion passes. And we'll move to item 10, Budget Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Thanks, sir. Item 10A, Fiscal Year 24, '25, Preliminary Budget Plan of Action. This is for the calendar. We're voting on calendar A, the Saturday workshop. I will make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we'll be voting on this fiscal year plan for our, I believe it's May the 18th, the Saturday workshop. Let's vote this motion.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
And that motion passes.
That's all I have on budget.
All right. And we'll move to item 11, the Finance Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized.
Thanks, sir. Item 11A, Commercial Lease Agreement. The Election Commission, I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? On this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thank you.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item 11B, Resolution 2403, is a Resolution for Water Infrastructure Grants Program, Hamlin County, excuse me, number 2022-2939, Russellville, Whitesburg Utility District, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this Resolution 24-03? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item 11C, Resolution 24-04, Resolution for Water Infrastructure Grants Program, Hamlin County, number 2022-2939, for Alpha Tablet Utility District, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
And this motion passes.
Item 11D, County Attorney Fee Increase, I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yens, one day.
This motion passes.
Item 11E, Low Voltage Package, RFP Award, I make a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, one day.
This motion passes.
Item 11F, Memorandum of Understanding Between Hamlin County, Tennessee, and the Avenue Church for Food Insecurity Grant, I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
Item 11G, Memorandum of Understanding Between Hamlin County, Tennessee, and the Moorestown-Hamlin Childcare Centers for Food Insecurity Grant, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item 11H1, Fund 101, County Clerk's Office, $700, I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item, excuse me, 11H2, Fund 101, General Administration Projects, $59,800, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item 11H3, Fund 101, School Resource Officer Program, $2,300,000, I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Item 11H4, Fund 116, Sanitation Department, $92,500, I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
And this motion passes.
Item 11H5, Fund 131, Highway Department, $121,200, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's...
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Hit your speaker button, so we can do...
My apologies.
We were beyond that, but...
Okay, that's all right. What I want to ask can come after that. I just have a question. It needs to be in finance, if you please, sir, when you get done.
Excuse me?
I have a question that I need to ask in finance, I think, but it's not on the agenda when you get done, please.
We'll vote this motion.
Thank you.
This motion passes. Commissioner Green?
Chairman Hahn, Chairman... My question is to deal with the franchise tax that the state is in lawsuit turning back, and I'd like to ask Mr. Long...
You'll need to direct your question to me right now, but go ahead.
If that's going to affect Hamlin County, sir?
Yes, no, not. The state is refunding the franchise tax. The way I understand, the bill that came down in the governor's budget, it's 400 and some million dollars that they're refunding. As far as any damage to our county, I don't know of any at the moment. That is money that's already been incurred or changing the formula, I do believe, to take care of that.
My next question, do we get any of that at all? I know it's the state, but does any of it come back to Hamlin County?
I do not know that answer.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. We will now move to item 12, the Personnel Committee. Chairman Doty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have item 12A, which is the Health Department Educational Loan Support Policy, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
That motion passes. Item 13, Public Services Committee Chairman Richardson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have 13A, Interlocal Agreement for Non-disaster Related and/or Recurring Sharing of Law Enforcement Resources by and between Moorestown Police Department and Hamlin County Sheriff's Department, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Just one question. Is that like when they had the riot at the jail, and they called in the city and the county both? Is that what it involves, or does it involve something further?
I will yield to the sheriff.
That's partially what it is. It's an agreement between the sheriff's office and the police department. We've utilized their SRT team, SWAT team, and that's at no cost to us. If they have a major incident in the city, we help them on calls. That's no cost to us or them. It's just an agreement between the two departments.
Thank you for the clarification, Sheriff.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
I have 13B, Surplus Items Sessions Court, a copier, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yens, zero days.
This motion passes.
Thank you. I have item 13C, surplus the service weapon back to Officer Stapleton, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. This is off the board, excuse me, it was added, so we have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner Doty. Is there any discussion on surplusing Detective Sergeant's service weapon? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to post, say nay, please. Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to item 14A, our Education Committee Chairman, Stan Harville, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 24-05 is a Resolution, Hamlin County Legislative Body, against school vouchers. I make that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, this is something that we're going to have to keep an eye on. I understand that it's going to come out of House Committee probably next week. There's been some changes to the preliminary bill that we've seen. Nothing has changed my mind on my stance on it, but I do think that's something that we're going to have to keep up with, just as a point of order there.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there anyone else? Commissioner Neesmith?
Uh... I'm for education, able way, shape, form, and fashion. But we've got something here that's down at the state. It's not come out of committee yet. Nobody voted on it. We don't know what the final decision is going to be on this. Are they going to give us more money for our schools? Are they going to give more money for the vouchers? We don't know. I can't vote for something until I know what's going on. I just wanted to let you know how I feel about it. If everybody else wants to vote on something, and they don't know what the end result is going to be, I've got my pleasure. Go ahead with it. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
I would just like to say that I want to refer this to athletics between the Division II schools and Division I schools, and... Two schools and Division One schools, and these schools were all together until about 1997. Bobby, you might remember, 1997, the T double S double A Legislative Council felt like that there was an uneven playing field. The, the private schools were getting financial aid, but the public schools were not. And they thought that there was uneasy, that athletes going in there and so forth. So they voted 1997 to split them. That's the reason you have a Division One school now that gives no financial aid. Those are your public schools. Your Division Two schools are in a different area, they give financial aid. Therefore, if you give financial aid, you've got to be in Division Two. I think what you have now, you've got an uneven playing field now. You've got the, the public schools that are required to take these tests and score so high on these tests, as well as several other areas where if you look at the private schools, you do not have that. They do not have the teaching endorsements that the public schools have to have. So I would encourage us to show support for the school board and hopefully unanimously supporting this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Doty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quick on this, my opinion of this, we say, I feel, I want the public to tell me how they feel about issues. As Mr. John Cox said, we may not always agree, but I want their input. This to me is us merely giving our state legislators our input as a group. That as a group, we back the resolution of the school board against the school vouchers so that they have an understanding of what their constituency thinks about it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Doty, Commissioner Howe, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. When I left the last meeting, I, I may not know all that's in there true, but I feel like with, like Mr. Reed, um, there, there, it isn't the same playing field and I, but I went ahead and emailed my representatives to let them know, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us, not just a body, but individual citizens, to say how you feel on this because a lot of input may help sway one way or the other. And, uh, that's all I have to say, but thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you, Mr. Doty.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. I will reiterate that our resolution to join the school boards is because of the verbiage that says, "The opposition to the Governor's Education Freedom Act," as well as any other voucher or education savings account legislation. That's what we stand opposed to. We do understand that there is more language to come out of this bill and there is possibly enticements that will be attached to this bill. We do not know. The concern of this body should be where it could affect county citizens in raising our taxes at some point to uphold education. That is our concern. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
I thought I voted. Sorry. Thank you.
Thirteen yay, one day.
And this motion passes. That concludes our business. That concludes our business. So in announcements, we have our March Committee meetings beginning on Monday, March the 11th. Our next commission meeting will be 10 days later, March 21st, here in this courtroom. One last announcement. Happy birthday to Commissioner from the 12th District, Bobby Hahn. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Doty?
I would just like to speak on one, on one thing about this, um, just really quickly because it's been brought up a lot, especially during the time that we were talking about the wheel tax. Many years ago, actually over 20 years ago, um, Hamlin County put to vote to the constituency whether they wanted wheel tax or property tax increase. It was voted for wheel tax and then the body later that year had to increase property tax. The reason for increasing property tax was that that was during a time of economic slowdown and our state government withheld dollars that had been previously been given to the school system and Hamlin County government had to make that up. That can happen again. If they start moving money and taking it, we can have to adjust taxes to compensate. The law says we can't give them less money than we did the previous year unless there's a 25% or greater decrease in student numbers. And if we've got growth in this county, we're not going to have a decrease in student numbers. So, um, that was one reason I really supported the standing with the school board on this, but it's just a little bit of history that it can happen. And by state law, the state does not have to fund at the same levels, but we have to make up for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, um, CTS has, has asked that I invite the commission members to, uh, a visit on March the 19th. If you'll put that on your calendars, UT President Randy Boyd is going to be in Moorestown on the 19th. He's going to come to see the Justice Center project and, um, and say a few words here, presentation from Jim Hart, who is their corrections consultant, and then tour the, the facility as well. So it's, it's, um, the 19th of March at 10:00 a.m. in the training room of the Rescue Squad Building. And President Boyd will, will be here and everyone here is invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All minds clear? We are adjourned.